Thirty seconds before seven o'clock. We're gonna call this meeting to order. And adoption of the agenda. Councillor Bennett.
Um. Five A finance, High Prairie Municipal Library twenty fifteen budget request. Could that not be twenty fourteen?
Twenty fourteen.
By the I.
Any new business arising? Any any anybody want anything outside of conditions? Uh. Councillor Bennett.
I make a motion to adopt the agenda with the change on five A finances should be twenty fourteen budget request about twenty fifteen.
All those in favor? You carry it. Schedule delegations. We have two this evening. Uh one from Atco.
Please. I'm not here.
Now let's step right on up.
How is everybody?
Very well.
Yes. First, I wanna say thank you very much for letting us come in and go over our two thousand thirteen franchise report with everybody. I'm pretty sure I've met everybody around the table, but I'm Amanda Mattern, the customer service supervisor for the Slate Lake and High Prairie district.
And Rick Zedek, I'm the area supervisor for the High Prairie district.
So I understand you guys all have a copy, so we're just gonna kinda run through the highlights of the two thousand thirteen report. Uh very informal, if you wanna stop us and ask any questions, please feel free to do so. So the first page just kinda outlines how long we've been doing business with uh High Prairie. We've had a franchise report in place since nineteen forty five. And as you know, Mel Bedet is the district manager for the area, and there's contact number and um email addresses on there. Our second page kinda goes over the financials, so our two thousand and thirteen distribution revenue was just over two point five million. With that, the franchise fee at six point two five percent, we collected a hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and thirty one dollars and twenty six cents. And based on a one percent increase, that would be about twenty five thousand five hundred and forty one dollars, but I believe you guys have decided to remain at the same franchise for the year. So we're estimating our two thousand and fourteen fees and taxes, again at the six point two five, is gonna be around two point eight million. Which will be uh your fee for excuse me, for twenty fourteen, will be a hundred and seventy eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty two cents. So we've got a graph on here just showing your franchise fee since two thousand and four. And Rick will talk about a little bit of the operations side of it.
Okay, so in two thousand and thirteen here is some work that we've completed to have. Uh we completed a high pressure uh sodium H P S valve change for all of High Prairie streetlights. That's been completed and finalized. And we've installed an outdoor uh vacuum recloser, which we call an O V R, to one of the feeders that feed the town here on five L five thirty line, and that's for protection. On there, so it's actually an upgrade to the system. And we've installed the voltage regulators uh back out here that feed out from our triangle sub that feeds towards the town here to to help boost the power up, especially if we have to do alternate feeds to uh supply the town here, so we have added regulation on there also. And uh we changed approximately about a hundred poles within the High Prairie as identified in our two thousand and eleven test and treat program. And that's the program that we go around every ten years and it's a it's a ten year cycle. So if it's done, we'll be going through it again, and we'll be testing probably in about another eight years, and we'll start rolling this for the next program. Okay, so we're proposed for two thousand and fourteen. Uh so we're gonna upgrade thirty five underground cables. Thirty five underground cables in the town of High Prairie as identified from our uh two thousand and twelve test program. And then also we're gonna be adding another switch in town here on one of our town feeders, a five L three fifty two and five L one oh five line, which their lines there can actually tie together to loop. So we're gonna add another gang switch here uh for reliability to the customers. Uh we did learn that from one of the big outages we had in town here, where if we add this in, we could actually switch a little bit of the you know, the downtown like industrial stuff around. So it'll be less of an impact if somebody ever runs a pole over or anything. Uh a brushing patrol will be completed within High Prairie, and any sites with uh safety concerns will be brushed immediately. And a full brushing project as identified in the brushing patrol will be completed in two thousand and fifteen. So anything they find that's a detriment to the, you know, to the town or the the facilities, uh will be done right away, and then the rest of it will be on a schedule. Okay, system reliability, uh static reliability, and that is uh delivered from two basic statistics. Uh the number of outages, which is the frequency, and then the length, which is the duration, and we'll talk a little bit uh about that on the page after this. Uh you know, basically the one thing that they're saying in here also is power outages occur for many reasons. The most uh common cause of unplanned outages, of course, are the weather. And unplanned third party contacts with the electric system, which we have seen a few of this year in town, and actually every year we seem to see a few in here where trucks sit in the back alleys and stuff. Uh. And uh then also we have our planned outage where we uh, you know, where we have to shut things off to do the pole changes, that type of thing, in town, or do upgrades for, you know, your water treatment plants, one example, or your sewer disstation, that's something and that type of thing. Okay, so uh so basically we have the two systems that we measure, we have the safety uh safies and the C. If you go to the next page here, this one here, uh I'll explain to you a bit more. Okay, we record re- uh reliability information by feeder lines, and the information for each line contains a measure of both urban and rural events. Uh this may result in uh a higher number of outages reported than actually experienced in your community. So like the the one thing is it's frequency and duration. So uh that's how it's measured on here. Uh so basically the next thing they're saying here is we have two main feeders in the town of High Prairie here. We have a five L seventy and five L one oh five line. And the five L one oh five line is actually the primary line that that actually feeds the town. And the five L seventy line is the other line that uh we can actually tie together if if we do have to do some switching around, or that other five L line that we talked about in earlier. So what they've done here too, when you see the graph here, they've actually uh measured the frequency and the duration here. So on five L seventy line, when you look at the chart here, in two thousand and twelve, uh their frequency was, you know, was two. And then uh interruption uh time was their average was uh five point eight three on that. But again, five L seventy line, this is the feeder that also has a lot of the rural and the other stuff on it, it's not the one that actually feeds the town. Uh 'cause in uh two thousand and thirteen, the frequency of it was four point nine two. And then the duration on there was like thirteen point one eight hours on the outages. But we really think there's probably some uh data on that one there, we're trying to figure out, you know, why it wasn't done, why those numbers were as high as they were. And we figure probably some of it is due to, like, we use a computer system, if it's not closed off properly, it can extend those numbers.
So if I guys may have, you know, the outage may have been seven hours, let's say, but they were two hours out of town, they drive back, they park their truck, and they're not pushing complete?
Yeah. And we did.
So there's been a real big push from Atco this year for our guys to make sure when you're out there and, you know, fixing the power line, even when you do a partial restore, they can put that in, so that we're 'cause we're measured on these numbers too, so when, you know, the A U C sees thirteen hours, they're asking us like what's going on, how are people off for thirteen hours, so you know, that you you have to take that number with a grain of salt, but like Rick's saying, that's not the town, I mean, the town's not off for thirteen hours, that's our our rural area.
That's right. And five L one oh five, that's the one that's underneath it, and then that one there, the, you know, the frequency there was one point four four on that in two thousand and twelve, and then the the duration time was average of three point one. And in uh two thousand and thirteen, we're at three point seven seven, with a duration of five point zero five. So uh on our Atco electric system, uh in two thousand and twelve, the whole system that Atco that we support, uh its frequency was two point one nine, and uh the total uh the interruption was average of one cent an hour. So actually, we were on five L one oh five, we're quite under the average there. And in two thousand and thirteen, it was two point uh two two, and then the system average was five point five nine, which, you know, as of and five L one oh five for High Prairie was five point zero five. And then the the Canadian average, which is the bottom line in two thousand and thirteen, uh was two point zero five, and the total uh uh duration time was eight point five nine. So that number there is the Canadian average when we, you know, that's like right across the the country. So that's how you kinda compare those numbers, it's uh uh we we've got it broke down a little bit of a verb under the bottom here, which we've kind of explained already. Where it says five L seventy outage to customers within the town of High Prairie averages one two hours. Uh statistics includes customer outages in other areas and surrounding uh High Prairie. And these are not to do anything with the transmission outage, like if we lose a transmission line or anything like that, they're not actually in this fact, this is only the distribution which is from our substation that feeds the town.
Okay. Yep.
Would we need to look at the frequency, what does that mean, the two, the one point four four to one nine, is that percent or is that?
No, that's a the amount, uh or so each customer in the area on average experienced two point two outages throughout the year.
Oh, so each customer?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh so that's the frequency that they would incur occurred.
So in twenty thirteen, each customer had four point nine two outages?
On five L seventy, yeah.
On five L seventy, yeah.
So in town, it was three point seven.
Yeah.
Okay, each customer.
So through a year, that's that's what we're given. Okay. Then we'll go to the the next page here, which is the streetlights. Uh and uh so basically, what we do here is uh uh D sixty one B is the investment option, so everything here is invested
That's right.
in High Prairie. Okay, so the inventory here was uh for your hundred watt H P S lights, uh the overhead ones that you have in town here, you have seven uh seventy six, and then the underground version, there's a hundred and eighty eight, uh and then uh the invested rate is uh investment rate is two hundred and sixty four. Hundred and thirty five H P S, there's none that are overhead, uh there's nine that are in uh that are fed by the underground, and then of course there's nine uh on that rate. Hundred and fifty watt H P S, your total count for overhead ones would be with overhead wire, ten, and your underground wire is thirty six. So grand total of forty six uh in the investment rate. Two hundred and fifty watt H P S, uh there is none that are fed from the overhead wires, uh forty six from the underground wire, and the investment rate is uh forty six. And then it looks like you have one mercury vapor light left in town. And that's probably the uh in one of your parks, I would think, or something, I'm not sure where that would be. So in total there, you have eighty seven lights in town here that uh that are fed with overhead lines. And with underground uh lines, you have two hundred and seventy nine, and there should be a grand total of three hundred and sixty six. Okay, so light repairs, uh lights uh out identified by patrols or reported by customers are to be re- uh repaired within two weeks. Is the time that they actually physically have to be repaired. Uh for two thousand and thirteen, all the lights uh uh were repaired within the two weeks.
So that's part of our franchise agreement with you guys, when all of your lights are on the invested option,
Uh. Yes.
our guys do a light self patrol starting September fifteenth, and they go right till May fifteenth, so any lights that are identified in that patrol, we it's actually ten work ten working days that we have to repair it, or if a customer in town or you guys call us and say, this light's out, we put it in the system, and then again we have ten days, and if we don't get it repaired in that ten days, then we pay you two months of the usage back.
And that's the next bullet under there, if not prepared within two weeks, the town of High Prairie uh will receive a two month credit and a delivery charge for that one. And that uh that is measured also by the A U C. So if we're missing it, we have to have to supply it with a check. Okay, undergrounder breaks, uh there are two underground streetlight cable breaks in two thousand and thirteen that have a temporary overhead repair. Uh there are still two breaks to be fixed in the summer of two thousand and fourteen, so there's still a couple out there that will that will have to repair. Okay, streetlight painting, next paint uh painting patrol is scheduled for uh twenty twenty. And the other thing about that too is if the town wants to participate in the patrol, they're they're more than welcome to participate in there at the time. Uh. Okay, the streetlight uh pole test program, the next uh pole test scheduled is for two thousand and seventeen. Uh in high traffic areas only, and every dabbit in uh twenty twenty two. So the ones that are in the heavy traffic areas, like along the highway here, uh they're very prone for the the calcium and the salt, and, you know, they need to be looked at, you know, more deliberately.
What's a streetlight test program? What does it do?
Uh what they do is they go around to the, like, to all the standards, and believe it or not, they actually alter some. Like, you know, uh when we go, we'll we'll look at the davits themselves, and as you know, I think there're
There're eight sides to them, I think.
Like, there're eight to them, and if there's three that are damaged, like if there's three dents, there's three quarters damage, that means that light will fail on. So 'cause it it weakens the structure that much. And again, what they do is they check the bases because they decrude it very fast. You know, 'cause especially with calcium, it seems to eat it up quite quite heavily. And then they actually do an ultrasound test on them, uh to determine the thickness of the metal. I've never actually watched them do it, but that's what uh.
When was the last time it was tested?
Uh the last time they were tested? Oh, we just changed streetlights last, we just finished lights.
In fifteen?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So they were just done the ones that were had failed the test, so they would have been probably tested.
For twenty thirteen, I think it's every five years.
Yeah. Yeah, so it'd have been five years prior to.
And I see under the underground breaks, there are still two breaks to be fixed in the summer of twenty fourteen.
So those are likely done, but these reports are always one year behind, so it's funny when we're talking about work that's gonna happen in twenty fourteen, 'cause that's probably done, and we're gonna talk about it on our twenty fourteen report, or it's just that year lag.
I think there's one in town here that we uh can't do that crosses the highway because of the gas line. We can't uh expose around that year the one gas line in town here. I'm pretty sure that's why that one is still overhead, 'cause we can't get permission to actually expose any of it from that, because there there because it's a aluminum or a aluminum gas line or something. Because I we looked at that one last year, and we tried to make arrangements to do that, and that's why they didn't do a patrol.
So what will they do, just leave it as an overhead?
Probably, in that case, if we can't if we can't uh come across the feeder, uh that's an option that's that's up there. You know, unless we can actually get permission to cross the pipeline. If they wouldn't, we they wouldn't give us give us permission the last time to cross the pipeline, so that's why it had to be left like that. Because we wanted them for underneath that one. But it's something we can definitely follow up with. Any more questions on the lights? And we have uh, you know, given one community a check, not ready for, you know, the missed lights. You know, when we actually went over that for two weeks, which is
It's ten businesses.
Ten, yeah.
Yeah.
So on the next page, you guys will see number six, which is customer complaint. So a customer complaint is defined as an issue that a customer has with Atco Electric that requires action or recovery, so this customer has called into the A U C. So if you're calling into the A U C, we have two days to come up with a resolution, so there I'm sure have been other customers in High Prairie that have called into the local office to say, you know, like maybe complain about an outage or things like that, but they're not um tracked complaints, so the only track complaint we had in uh twenty thirteen was in regards to brushing, so the customer had uh trees trimmed on their property, and one branch was not trimmed back enough, and it hit the power line, so Atco Electric coordinated, um temporary disconnected the power so the tree could be safely removed. So that was resolved.
There's one one customer of yours.
Mm-hmm.
Um they have a tree in their yard, and the power line goes right through it.
Mm-hmm.
Um it's a huge tree. They were told by the town that it was Atco's responsibility to either remove the line or the tree. And Atco said, no, it's on the town property, and it's a healthy tree, we're not cutting it down, even though it's fifty feet high, and the power line's running right through the middle of it. Um it's how did they resolve that issue?
That that's a forestry issue, but we could look into that, I would have, I don't know the particulars of that specific case, but that would have been our forestry department that would have talked to that customer. But we could definitely look into that if you know any.
Yeah, if we can get the particulars on the address and stuff like that, yeah.
Okay, absolutely, I'll forward that to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, that's fine, that's good because, you know, sometimes like, you know, if it's, like, that's the one hazard, like, you know, wires through trees gets climbed over.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
That type of thing, you know, and it depends on the wires that are going through the trees.
So you don't track any of the customer complaints that come into the local office?
We do, locally, but as far as the franchise report, it's any complaints that are logged through A U C that we have to discuss in our reports. But we internally at our office log all of the complaints that we have from customers, so if that's something you guys want us to share it to, we can definitely do that.
Well, I know that uh twice at least this year, there were many complaints from restaurants where shower was shut off at lunch hour.
That's twenty fourteen, so that very well could be in our twenty fourteen report if they called into the A U C.
And should they call there rather than the local office?
They can absolutely do that. Mm-hmm.
That's actually um the best avenue they can probably go, like if they have issues with that, is, you know, use the A U C con- like the uh the complaint line there, and then that has to be followed up within two days from the utility. And we deal with it in the office too, yeah, you know, that's another avenue if people aren't, you know, one hundred percent happy right.
A U C or do you see?
A U C.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
So the ones that you've got in your office, do you uh group them or do you just list them or?
We keep just an internal tracker of any customer complaints that come in and how, you know, what the resolution was, or if there wasn't, or what follow up steps there was, we just have an internal tracker.
But you don't group them into types of complaints?
No. But if you wanted that data, I mean, it wouldn't take anything for us to filter that and and get it to you.
I think.
Yeah, or if that's something you want us to put in next year's report, we could think about that.
Oh, so you do up this report yourselves?
Yeah, we do.
I would like to see
Sure.
the just grouping of types of complaints that you're doing.
And just a reminder that uh the scheduled delegation's fifteen minutes, so if we can keep our questions down so that you can finish off on the report, that would be great.
We'll be real quickly here, the next is um about community involvement, of course, Atco Electric likes to be really involved in the communities where we work as well. So throughout um twenty thirteen, we provided approximately forty one thousand dollars in sponsorship and giving kinds to High Prairie and surrounding areas. Uh we participated in annual High Prairie Elks Pro Riorio, we have loaned out our barbecues and tents to various community organizations. And we um volunteer for lots of stuff throughout High Prairie, whether that's sports and recreational activities involving youth and school programs. And then another part of that is our public safety, so every year we do a grade five um presentation at the schools. We participated for the third year uh for our go guy, go girl activity, junior high students come into Atco and they get to visit, and they take a look at the bucket truck, and get to climb a hole, and spend the day with the guys, they absolutely love it. And we participated in the High Prairie Party Program. So page eight is something new, I don't know if you guys have seen these reports before, but we um are now breaking out the customer usage per town. So whether that's a, you know, general services, residential, so you can see there the total sites by rate class for all of High Prairie, and then the consumption as well as the franchise fee. So, well, we won't go through it all 'cause we're kinda short on time, but if you guys have any questions.
Well, what would this represent then?
So that is um for all of your Ha- High Prairie customers, sixty one percent of them are residential customers. And so on, so the breakdown's there, so general service makes out fifteen percent of all of the customers in High Prairie, twenty percent are streetlights, two percent are Sentinel lights, and two percent is industrial, so the lion's share of customers that we have in High Prairie is residential. So your second graph is the total consumption, so all of the consumption in High Prairie, forty six percent of it is industrial consumption, of course, they're using more power. Uh twenty five percent is residential, and twenty eight percent is uh general service, and there's a very minimal amount there for streetlights.
What's general service?
General service is um a like a small business.
Oh, commercial then?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Yeah. Industrial is the sort of the bigger businesses. And then the last one is your all the franchise fees that were collected, and that's broken out of how much percent of each. So forty one percent was the residential, which, you know, makes sense with the fact that sixty one percent of all of the customers are sixty one percent. And then it just lays it out for another in a different graph format on the bottom for you guys to look at.
So this would, I know this is all, but this is interesting, and
Yeah, no.
One one of the things I would look at is that in three years, we haven't been in any real sites.
No.
There's no
That's the next page though, Quentin.
Okay.
Page eleven?
Yeah, if you go to the end.
Yeah, we're on the eight, eighth.
We're on eleven.
Yeah, that's me, that's where I am too.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at the total site count by month by rate class.
Oh, you're looking at the bottom, yeah, sorry.
And from January twenty eleven to December twenty thirteen.
Mm-hmm.
It's basically eighteen hundred for the three years straight.
Yeah, it's very
And there's no
Yeah.
So there's no new uh electrical?
Yeah.
Not a lot of customers.
Yeah, it's pretty consistent.
And then you actually look at the the bottom graph on that page, um consumption's actually down over that three year period.
Okay. So what does that mean, that consumption is down, does that mean that people are turning their lights off more, or that?
It could be, people are more aware these days of saving power, it could, that that could be what it is.
Uh or the site isn't being used.
Not as much.
That could be too.
Mm-hmm.
So the site could be vacant.
It could be, I mean, it's hard for us to know that, but
You could sell the meter there, but the house just turned off, or or the apartment's empty, or the
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Whatever, or L E D lighting, like we say, right?
Mm-hmm.
Or L E D lighting, so there's
Versus
So there's various factors that are playing into this consumption going down.
Yeah. You betcha.
It's really hard if it's like one thing right now.
And yet, didn't you tell us at the beginning that
The franchise fees will go up?
Yes.
Yes, uh but the franchise fees are not just tied to how many customers you have, it's tied to the distribution revenue. So although everybody loves when the Atco's bills go up, then of course your franchise fee goes up, right? So when
So you're charging more for them?
When we charge more, right, there's always increases, um with, yeah, so you see that in your franchise fee.
Okay. So that's why this is going up, and yet
And your numbers aren't.
The numbers aren't.
Yeah. I betcha. And the very last page, this is um new, we've never reported on this before, but we put out an email um last year and asked for all the site IDs for any municipal owned sites. And so we've just done up a graph as far as actual town sites, and um you know, the consumption that they use, there was, and I'm not gonna say an error, but it looks funny on the graph because the Arena changed price schedules, they were originally on a D twenty one, so that's like a small commercial, but because the uses were so high, we did a um rate comparison, and we put them on a thirty one. So that's why you see that spike right there in the January two thousand and eleven. So this is all of the town sites.
So January of two thousand and eleven in the middle graph, or which graph?
Yep, the middle and the bottom, because there was a rate change, so you can see here from, and again, like Quentin said, it's pretty steady.
Oh, it's
So uh January two thousand and eleven, you guys had about twenty general service sites, and about ten industrial and like one Sentinel light. And those numbers have stayed pretty consistent since two thousand and eleven.
Okay.
Pretty pretty constant.
Yeah.
And is there anything there that we should be worried about or bother, or it's just an information?
It's just an information, and so this information was, you guys provided us your site IDs, and we just built the graph based on what you had. So we've been asking all of the towns that we've been doing these presentations at whether they think this is a value added graph, some don't really see the purpose, but if it's something you want us to report on, on a go forward, we definitely can.
Well, what do you see as an element here?
I think it's nice to know, you know, of your sites what they are, so you know, you've got twenty on the D twenty one rate, which is the commercial, and ten on the industrial, other than that, I'm not sure what you can take from it.
Gives you a snapshot of actually what you have. Gives you a snapshot of actually what you have.
But don't I have that D twenty one information?
Nope, but that other one, that chart is for all of High Prairie, so that's not your site.
This is um, thank you.
Yeah.
This is just the town.
So this is just yours.
And when you say D twenty one, is that sentinel lights?
That's commercial. You betcha.
Commercial.
That's commercial. So that's general service.
Mm-hmm. You got it.
And what other kind do we have?
Industrial. So that would be like your um, well, your Arena is an industrial. Maybe yours.
Your sites.
Near left station.
You let, you rattle off some numbers on these sites we have.
Yeah, it looks like you've got about twenty general service.
One, I see, we're just missing one.
Yeah, there's color differences.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, you guys don't have colors, so.
Oh, yeah, you can lock it, wait.
Yeah, you've got about twenty general service, about five um industrial and it looks like maybe one sentinel light, so maybe that's a light.
Five industrial. It could be sitting up, but uh I'm thinking it's probably a water or you have your water.
Water treatment. Do you have a light up there?
Is it costing us a lot for that? Is it costing us a lot for that one?
A month? I would think you're paying probably forty dollars a month for that.
There's probably one that the that the guys who are in the entry room should have checked, I would think.
Probably like a yard, like.
It'd be a meter.
Yeah. The sentinel lights are like the ones that are on or the on a pole and that's that's a big water.
A meter.
Yep.
Yeah. But they could be changed later. Uh. Not necessarily.
Yeah, I'll leave there's many things. The person could get rid of it and actually put your own light on, you get over the two and you even have the.
Mr. Walker. That light is in McIntyre Park.
Is where it's stored?
McIntyre Park.
Which is the
The one across, down across from Water Lake College downtown. Oh, Tony Park.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Cause there's one in the middle left. And we didn't buy it when we bought the rest because it's in inside the park, it's not a street.
That it's got a meter on it strictly.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are, this is all the data you guys provided at. So um it looks like you've got one, one light is what I'm guessing there.
So it could be as cost savings to just put a different light on.
Possibly, yeah.
Something a person can look at.
In the last page, uh we didn't include it with your package. We've got a copy here, we can leave it for Crystal maybe if you want to give everybody a copy. It's called our Rule Two Report. So there are um several different actions that we are measured on by Alberta Utilities Commission. Um Energize and de-energize requests, we have to get those done within five days. Uh meter reads, uh customer complaints, like I said, we have to respond within the two days. Our customer satisfaction has to be um at at or above seventy five percent. So there's a bunch of different things that we're measured on. And if we don't meet those measurements, then there's a financial implication for Acco Electric. So they do have a report every year. It's about fifteen pages here, some lovely graphs for you guys, but we didn't think it would come through very well in your reports. So we've made a copy and we can leave it with Crystal and um if you have any questions, you can let us know. But there's about twenty different graphs in there, so we probably don't have time to go through all of them today.
And if you wanna, if any more questions hold on, you can help the L two.
We'll leave you guys some cards and uh you can get in touch with us whenever.
Is there, is there anything in that report that that you looked at and said you learned this?
Uh. You know, I don't think there's anything that really, you know, that stands out. Like, you know, like in our complaint section there, we're meeting the the seventy five or above.
Standards.
You know, it asks, you know, you know, it kinda actually gives you a little bit of information of, you know, what what we're measured on and where we're sitting at and that type of thing.
We're making all of our Rule Two requirements.
So. Again, and Rule Two is uh it's, you know, it's started now and, you know, like we're being measured on certain things now. And then next year, it's probably gonna, you know, we're probably gonna get measured on more.
They're looking at twelve additional measurements.
Actually. And it's what it's doing is keeping, you know, you know, the rate, like keeping us honest with the rate barriers type of thing to make sure that we, the technology that, you know, our rate barriers are investing in or getting it being beneficial and saving money. So, you know, we have to make sure that we meet these needs and and get penalized and. It's like the lights, like we had to take delivery one check to a community and to do this to our users. You know, so we actually had to do that in this, and doing our light out patrols and stuff like that, that's how things are tracked. Or if you guys call in from the town and say you have this many lights out, that starts a, you know, starts a process, measuring process.
We now do have an on, on our Acco Electric website, you can report a streetlight right online now.
Yeah.
So we've been encouraging um towns to let uh their customers know that they can just go right on there and report it and a ticket is created and the guys will be sent out.
Are we getting any new streetlights in town? Are there any requests for streetlights to be put in?
A few, yeah. Yeah.
All of the uh street lighting down at the hostel.
Yep.
Uh thirty ninth street, thirty eighth street, those, I think there's ten there for sure.
Ten towns already, yeah.
Are there not any residential permits or?
Uh, there's some there, I think.
No. Typically that would be, you know, when you've got a new subdivision coming in where they're gonna put some lights or if you find a place in town where it's very dark, you might wanna put the one up here and there. But when you have an established community, you're not gonna have a ton of streetlights popping up.
Yeah, usually the developers will come in and, you know, you know, put in what they need, what they require in the dark and stuff. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Um, I was gonna leave you some cards. Yes.
Sorry we took up more time.
That's okay, it's an important issue.
Can I have that? I'm using. Okay. Again, thanks for having us. Yeah.
You?
Thank you.
Are you from here or?
Yes, well, I live, yes, I've been here for three years now. I'm a guy that's under now. I spent, I spent a lot of time in Milwaukee, a lot of time, a lot of the community around here too.
And next we have the High Prairie Municipal Library. Feel free to point it up.
I'm getting smaller every time.
Uh, good evening, Council and Mayor. Uh, we were here two weeks ago. We made a presentation on our, what we thought was our two thousand fourteen budget, but apparently we were misunderstood 'cause you guys thought we were presenting on our capital reserve as well as what we required for two thousand fifteen. What we were here to tell you guys was we are going to be short and we needed the money that you guys took away from us in our budget. So right now, you should have our interim expense report, right? That should have been forwarded to you guys. Okay, so if you have a look at that, you'll see, I mean, it's it's pretty clear. Uh, by the end of two thousand fourteen, we will be short forty six thousand dollars. We still have not repaid the MDA Big Lakes for the nineteen thousand dollars that we owe them because of our budget cut. So they had given us what we originally got budgeted and we have not returned that money. Um, so right now, we're short. We will not be able to actually pay our bills, I think, I believe at the end of November.
Unless we get this, missing nineteen thousand.
Yeah, so. It keeps kind of dragging on. We're, we're a little frustrated, needless to say. Um and so we just came to re, I guess, reiterate how important it is that uh if you guys had questions, I mean,
To see if. Yeah.
we thought that we had answered questions last week, or I guess two weeks ago when we were here, but, but I guess perhaps we didn't.
That's right.
So just to clarify, um the funds were never taken away 'cause uh a budget was presented and it was declined.
Yes. Yes.
It was our projected, but we felt that's, yeah.
Yeah. But what what I'm saying is that you you made a request
Yes, for sure.
and and council felt that the previous budget would be sufficient. Uh, when it comes to budgets and numbers, um I've just reviewing your year-to-date, your projected and stuff. Uh, or your projected for year-end versus your actual budget. Uh, and one of the statements that I read was that um with retirement of our library manager and one of our time staff member, we have non-budget advertising costs of a large amount of training hours. Um, usually when a senior staff member leaves and a new staff member comes on, there's usually a cost savings. Because your other person's at the top of the grid and your new person's at the bottom of the grid, usually. So th- there's usually a cost savings, there not a cost overrun.
We will be seeing that cost savings in the new year, but you have to remember too that the library manager is a big position and Tracy needed lots of training. As well as whoever filled Tracy's shoes and whoever filled that part-time. We had to, we were cross-training all our staff at the same time, so that amounted to excess hours that we weren't expecting. We will be seeing, that line will drop a little bit, I imagine in January for that same reason, 'cause Janet was at the top and Tracy's starting in at the bottom. But for this time period, because we hadn't budgeted the advertising, we hadn't budgeted the extra training hours, that was the biggest thing.
Right. I think one of the other things that that added to that cost was the fact that Janet had accrued so many holiday days, so she was actually paid for three months, two months, three months of holidays. So so that's, that's where that cost went up.
Yeah.
So she had some carryover for three years here, yeah.
Um, she had carryovers, yeah, so that's where we ended up having a higher cost. And you're right, uh Tracy should be a little bit lower than than Janet was.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, and and that will show next year, but unfortunately this year, we we didn't, we didn't foresee it. We should have.
Okay.
I mean, Janet has been there for a while, so.
But she had been, she's been saying for the last three years, four years, she was gonna retire soon. So we just didn't.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, and tha- and tha- that's understandable, the carryover that can be dealt with through policies, changes, whatever else. But to continue then, knowing that your budget had been cut, one of the things I'd be trying to do is find the cost savings to make sure we're within budget. And when I looked at the numbers you provided, um I see that professional fees are up thirty five hundred, salaries up twenty five thousand. Uh, casual temp up ten thousand, payroll up eight, nine thousand. E- even workshop and education and travels up five thousand.
That's, that part there too lets up Tracy's, because she's stepping into the manager's shoes. She's also, she's already taken her uh she's already taken a whole bunch of courses and she's got some more, because she does have a big responsibility now. Even with her training, she still needed to take the occupational health, uh employment standards course, she's gotta take all those courses. So that brings those numbers up. What was the other one you questioned? 'Cause I had the answer for that one.
The professional fees were up thirty five hundred.
Okay. Because this year we've switched over to a a bookkeeper, uh we've we've let you guys know ahead of time that we were dropping the auditor and going to bookkeeper. The bookkeeper uh has had to come in and clean up a mess. But Janet wasn't a trained bookkeeper and the auditors weren't, hadn't caught some mistakes. So now we've got Joanne working as well with uh David Bliss trying to get our books back in order. Those numbers again will drop in the new year. Right now, we're just giving Joanne and David a chance to get our books cleaned and ordered and and there's stuff that the auditor, David said is stuff the auditor should have caught, had to do with our capital reserves that wasn't caught. So uh they're working a little bit harder now to clean up that mess and we'll start fresh in January.
So, so Madrik Fletcher Fletcher, sorry?
We dropped them.
Didn't catch some things?
Yeah, they, and David's gonna give us a report here at the end of the year about the things he's had to, that he felt that they should have caught that was carried over with our reserves that he said that's cost us more money and all because of the bookkeeper. And she's, and she's a very excellent bookkeeper and she's using David uh as a sounding board and he's helping her get things in order. So we're actually getting a really good deal there.
Okay.
And we expect those numbers to go back down once everything's cleaned up.
Yeah, so salaries, casual and payroll costs are up about forty four, forty five thousand. And that's because someone was gone for three months. You have to fill that void, then you have to fill the other void.
And also we had to come up with a little bit of extra money for the summer staff as well too. The summer staff, we lost some of the grants we were getting, so we were paying some of them too.
But. Down.
Some of them.
So it just happened to be a year that everything kinda went wrong, could go wrong, and as we were trying to fix things up and
Yeah.
'Cause we've always been very careful budgeting and we've always, I think in the ten years I've been on the board, it's only been once, we've had to come back and say, we're over budget, we need money. So to me in ten years, that's not bad for for our library.
So if we were to prove the nineteen and a half thousand.
We would still be a little bit short, but, you know, that's something we'll we'll have to figure out ourselves, but that that's too big of a number, that's our wages, that's our utility bills, you know?
It's still a little short. Okay.
Any other questions?
Just wanna, just quick, uh a little question, I, and I don't know some of the background, but there was uh back in February, it was, there was questions about the capital reserve. Was the question about using some of the capital reserve money for operating and?
You guys were questioning what we were doing with that money, why we were sitting on so much. And we were trying to explain to you that because it was an older building with lots of renovations to do, uh the structural stuff we had to fix because of water damage. So we were, actually Larry Behrens, he was the CEO quite a few years back, he's the one that told us, anything spare, like squirrel your money away, 'cause when it comes to those major repairs, you you can't come to you guys and say, I, I need thirty thousand to to do new floors this year, 'cause you guys would just laugh at us. So we were, we've actually been squirreling our money, hadn't done much renovations, been putting it away and putting it away, and that's where we got the capital reserves and now we spent just about all of it, but the building looks really good.
So can you use capital reserve dollars for operating uh deficiencies?
That's not, but we, that's what we'd never intended it for. That was always to put away for the evergreeting of our computers, for, like I said, any structural damage, for any renovations that needed to be done, and that's what that money was for.
In our minds, that's what that money is for. Um, it's it, there isn't much left. We've, I mean, I think, I'm not sure if Simone has provided you with a breakdown of where the capital reserves have gone. I think we're down to
Yes, yeah.
eleven thousand, just over twelve, under twelve thousand dollars. Um we were hoping that we could hold on to that as our capital reserve. We still have some bigger plans, hopefully for two thousand fifteen. Um, but I mean, you guys are town councils, so ultimately the decision is yours.
Council, go ahead.
On on behalf of, on the, on behalf of the library, I mean, when you look at at the stuff that they've put into that building from doors, fire alarms, um new flooring, um and 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 uh all the other things, the the new renovations that are getting done. And they, they did everything that was asked of them in, I believe if your note says, in February, you were asked to provide a breakdown and it you know, you you put it together, you mailed it, didn't, somehow it got lost in transmission, so you came back. There was the confusion about the twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, um so now you're, now you're clear that you're asking for that nineteen five fifty six from the twenty fourteen that we that we held back based on your, your capital reserves that you had. And you've now used and you've provided us with the breakdown of what you've used those for. So I think you've met everything that we've asked in terms of trying to figure out what you did and and why.
And our biggest goal is just to to provide an awesome service for the community and to have a beautiful building so people could come in and feel at ease and, you know, enjoy it. This is a service that High Prairie and the N U provide and it's, it's a very essential service.
That's great.
Just questioning why the library had to, were, you guys had to upgrade for handicapped accessible doors, upgrade fire alarms. Why were you guys, I'm just curious why were you guys?
Because the town wouldn't do, so, no offense, it wasn't you guys, but the town wouldn't do it and because we service from like two to to ninety and wheelchair accessibility is important at seniors with their walkers, it was very important for us. Because that's our mandate. It says right in the library's app that we should off- offer equal access to our library to all, all the people in the community. So all that handicap accessibility, that was very important. And the town was dragging their feet on it, so we went ahead and we brought the consultants in to do it and we worked hard with the town and with our own budget to make sure that that building, same thing with the elevator, it used to be an old service elevator when the college had it and it wasn't functioning. We worked with the town to make it functioning and now upstairs, which is where you guys are renting out, is very handicapped and senior accessible. Because we pushed to have that done. So technically, it's your building and it's, we've improved your building quite a bit. We, you know, it's improved a lot. And we still have in the back of our mind that we'd like to take over the upstairs. We're just working on some ideas on how to do it.
Any other questions? Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks.
Any public delegations? Seeing one and seeing none. On to three eight minutes, special meeting of council, the regional economic development alliance, Prida, held on October twenty second, twenty fourteen.
I make motion that council, through the minutes, for the special meeting of council, regional economic development alliance, Prida, held on October twenty second, twenty fourteen.
Just a small thing, uh motion six six nine fourteen moved by deputy, should say carer.
Just a small thing uh motion six six nine fourteen moved by deputy should say Carrie that on just one council just a typo.
Any others maybe the cons? Seeing none. All in favor accept it. Approved. And regular meeting of council October twenty second twenty fourteen three eight two. Councillor Carrier.
The council approved the minutes from the regular meeting of council held on October twenty second twenty fourteen.
Discussions. Seeing none all who's in favor. And three eight three special meeting of council re in camera personnel members fourth twenty fourteen page thirty one in your agenda. Councillor.
I'd like to um strike the preamble on page thirty two. Is the sign in sheet a requirement for the minutes? Um I'd also like to strike the line on page thirty three that says C E O advised council on procedural bylaw.
Did the C E O advise?
The C E O reiterated the bylaw. How do you take his advice?
Semantics did did the C E O advise council on procedural bylaw?
He presented the procedural bylaw and he advised us and I don't think the minutes are supposed to reflect being in.
The minutes are for the councils. And also although I may have said uh on motion six nine six into camera I'd like to edit it to say in camera.
So you have some changes here that need to be discussed or approved. Councillor Black would like the preamble.
Again my advice the meeting that was held on November the first was illegal therefore the the motions that were made on that day without restating those motions council couldn't go forward to call legal counsel. The only way to make those motions legal is to have those motions restated so that we could go ahead for you to call counsel. And so the preamble gives at least a background as a necessity for an understanding that the November first meeting minutes are not here they cannot be part of this because they are not minutes that are legal and yet motions were made or carried forward from those meetings and there has to be a reason for it that's why the preamble exists.
Uh but the preamble is referring to a meeting you say that didn't exist or should not have existed whether that's correct or not I'm not gonna argue at this point. Uh I'm not gonna uh discuss the legality of it uh what I'm saying is the preamble is reflecting on something that is moot. So I requesting it to be struck.
Is that just the first paragraph councillor or are you the actual motions also are are you to be struck?
No we can leave the motions in it's just the preamble that I requested be struck.
So the motions stand.
My position if I may. These are our minutes true. But they're a historical document as well. And so for other councils for the public down the road it's not a bad thing to have. It's a lesson. If if we did something that was inappropriate or against our procedural bylaw or against the M G A there's nothing wrong with it stating that this was done and this was what was done to rectify that. I don't take offense to it. It was it was something that was done inappropriately we made a mistake.
That's a.
Councillor.
A- again I don't want to discuss the legality issue or into a disagreement or argument uh that is your opinion that is intended by Mr. Tmacho okay.
Sure.
Uh it also reflects on something now council may not know November first twenty fourteen but there's no other uh information regards to the November fir- November first. Um so it really it doesn't come into effect at all. There's no minutes that are in this report there's no minutes from that date so.
Doesn't camera.
No tho- the the that meeting was that approved that meeting is not in our agenda today the November first correct? So as if it didn't happen although there are notes sign in sheets minutes communication um the the invitation was made to the C E O or or the uh person left in charge when the C E O was unavailable but he was on vacation or leaving on vacation so if the two people are unavailable we move forward. But again I I I I don't wanna go there I I've just requested these struck I request the edit to be in camera on motion six nine six fourteen and request the next line to be struck.
Would anyone like to speak to it? Councillor Carrier.
My only concern is we moved into camera at six oh eight P M and we have minutes at six ten. Um that's a that's red red alarms and bells are ringing because we cannot take notes we can't discuss anything that happens in camera but we're discussing it in our minutes. That's my only concern with that one.
Any other discussion? And you do realize that by going this route by seeking legal opinion on our own that we could be responsible for paying that ourselves just for the record. That's a possibility to. We don't have the authority on our own to contact legal and ask for legal opinion.
Yes we do.
I believe that our proc.
As council we do.
As council we do.
I believe though that if you look I wish I had it our procedural bylaw I believe states that the legal advice we our C E O is the ones to seek the legal advice.
Wouldn't you find it a conflict to s- to request the C E O to seek legal rega- legal advice regarding the actions of the C E O?
Difficult. Difficult.
Yeah I'd 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 find that challenging.
Just a move for thought.
So I I I like that though because what it means is we should change this bylaw could could you tell me the bylaw please?
Um. No I can't that's why I say I wish I had it.
Okay um.
That was just my understanding.
So I'd like to make a motion since we're already discussing we haven't made a motion yet. I'd like to make a motion to adopt uh the minutes you can vote against it and we can discuss but before.
But we did have a motion earlier.
No there was no motion.
I thought you made a motion to to.
No I went straight into discussion it was my fault.
Oh okay.
Yeah I I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as amended with my request for striking of the preamble um edit on the motion six nine six fourteen in camera and the striking of the confidential line after we moved in camera.
Now any further discussion? Councillor Black.
So just to understand you councillor after you want the preamble struck you want the uh change from into to in and what was the third one sorry?
The line below that where it's underneath carried when it talks about after we moved in camera that the C E O advised council on procedural bylaw.
Okay I okay it's struck.
Any further?
If just on this one on this one I think uh like councillor Carrier said if you're in camera you can't be carrying motions outright so it was we would have been in camera at six ten so you can't have a motion while you're in camera so I don't think that one fits right in the uh so that's just my only comment on that one it can't be in there but it's going back to the the preamble thing I think it's right because we do have sign in sheets and other thing I think it's good to indicate that uh why there was no minutes from that meeting being uh read and then that these are the meetings basically the minutes from that meeting that were done on the the fourteenth or on the fourth so that's that's my thoughts.
Any further discussion? Seeing none call a question? And can we have a question read back please?
Moved by councillor enter that council approved the minutes from the special meeting of council regarding in camera personnel held on November fourth as amended to delete the preamble edit motion six nine six fourteen moved by councillor enter that council moves in camera at six oh eight and delete C E O advised council on procedural bylaw number two two thousand and fourteen section sixteen point three and left council chambers at six ten.
All who's in favor? Opposed? Councillor.
And.
Business arising. Um councillor in front of her business I guess we're into finance five eight. Is that correct five eight one.
Mm-hmm okay Lonnie go ahead.
I caught her I caught caught her out of my eye first councillor Black.
I make a motion that council approve Highbury and District Library twenty fourteen budget request in the amount of nineteen thousand five fifty six and zero of all zero cents to be taken from account.
Restricted accumulated surplus account.
Restricted.
Accumulated surplus.
Accumulated surplus account.
Discussion.
It's difference between the restricted accumulated surplus and the unrestricted accumulated surplus.
It has to be from an operating expense account.
The operating expense account okay for an operating expense.
It could be from grants uh organizational grants you you could uh boost the budget of for nineteen thousand dollars under the library grant there are two options there.
Okay uh restricted is for capital uh restricted accumulated surplus is for capital expenses this is for operating expenses.
Okay.
Yeah yeah.
So we need to change the motion.
Yeah.
So the motion you want to change it.
I changed it. Yeah thank you.
Any further questions seeing further debate discussion? Seeing none.
Councillor. I'm just a little concerned that we have a building in town that's not handicap not able for the disabled to use the building the library has to foot the bill. I think that looks very poorly on the town like they're upgrading the fire system that that's kinda scary that we're giving it up to renters to do this to our buildings and upgrade the buildings to make it accessible.
I stated it time and again about how we as a small town keep absorbing the downloading responsibilities from federal and provincial and here we are doing the exact same thing to our own public library.
Just the one other side of that is all of the capital reserves are been have been funded by the town and the M D so in in a way we have been it just hasn't been us pushing that forward which I agree with you we should be having our public facilities all done right
Good point.
uh but in a way it's all being paid for by the town and the M D pa- taxpayers at the end of the day. But being a little more proactive would have been better there.
Mere comments.
Well actually I agree with councillor Penasek that maybe you didn't wanna be so proactive there because we did end up splitting the the expenditure on that portion for the but I I will bring up the fact that the renters in that building uh don't receive many services from the town for example the parking lot I see the town's parking lot is always unclear but the Wustus building's parking lot is still got snow in it from the last snowfall very first snowfall seizing and this is an ongoing concern of the tenants in that building constantly as to why when they pay rent why are they not uh receiving the uh amenities that any other rental tenant would receive in any other commercial building that's being rented out so either either the town hires someone to go and fix that do that parking lot and then it's done after every snowfall similar to I G A and Super A and any other uh commercial building in town or public works is told when they do the town parking lot at the same time they do the Wustus building and then we're being treated equally the town is being treated equally as the same as the tenants as the Wustus building.
Is there a triple net clause in in the lease agreement?
No. The leases aren't triple net.
Can you define what a triple net thing is?
You'd have your sewer water your lights your snow rule all those things built into uh costing a right within the lease.
Most commercial buildings in most just about all commercial leases are are they're called triple net and that's the downloading of all expenses onto the tenant so no expenses come to the landlord it's just you're gonna pay everything that's in that building in some sense the library does have a triple net because they are putting all their expenses associated to their budget and then they pay for it.
Certainly something we can discuss in public work sending to the budget preparations possibly see how much it costs to do that. Any other discussion? To the motion. Councillor Black one more time around.
I'll just reiter- reiterate again um what the l- the library has has done to that building in terms of the renovations um some of the stuff of I mean popcorn machines and that kinda stuff but the the bigger parts of the renovations that they've in- that they've incurred by using those their their surpluses and they were doing what they were told by by our C E O just keep a little keep a little um when they brought that to us we looked at it in a different manner um. I'm in favor of of giving them the money.
Mere comments.
I'm also in favor of giving them the money and I would commend them for taking the time and the effort to hire someone to fix the foundation of that building because more that it was rotting around the spreading of the building the more that that building was going to fall down around their ears so they at least went out and and did what they what any good tenant or landlord whatever would do to fix that asset um I would hope though that in the twenty fifteen budget that they I I would like to see in their twenty fifteen budget that they break out some of their programming costs away from the library costs as in instead of wrapping everything into salary I'm certainly sure there's some programmers that are being hired there and then. and then they could say, okay, well, this is what the programming costs are, rather than one total library cost. So, but that's just a comment on the twenty fifteen budget.
Mm, if I may, keeping in mind, again, if we don't authorize this, then they're not of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty six, they're out nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty six twice, so they'll have to pay back the M D. So something to take into consideration when you're looking at thirty eight thousand dollars plus. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call a question, will we have the question read back, please?
What is the number?
Right, limited action.
Okay, should I tell Lily?
All of us in favor?
Lily, Lily.
Oh.
Um, the motion has to be specific to which operating expense account you're going to be taking it out of. Which could be grants or, sorry, what did you say here?
Grants to other organizations is some money available in it, or you can increase the library grant or the grant to the library budget by the amount that they requested, so you'd have to include that in your motion too, that you're augmenting the library budget, library grant budget by nineteen thousand, and these funds are to be taken out of that account.
Counselor, Counselor Penasek.
I'd like to make a friendly event that we um increase the operating grant to the library by the requested amount.
Is that paper route?
That's fine.
That way we have that read back, please.
Moved by Counselor Danaka, that council approved the Hybrion District Library two thousand and fourteen budget request in the amount of nineteen thousand five hundred and fifty six dollars to be taken from the operating expense, increasing the library grant line item by nineteen thousand five hundred and six, five hundred and fifty six thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Is that right?
Two questions.
Yeah.
No, that was my comment also.
I saw some. Okay, all of us in favor? Carried in advance? Next, five eight two, twenty fifteen interim operating budget proposal. Here we go. Counselor.
I'd like to make a motion that council receive for information.
Counselor.
Okay, um I'd like to uh ask the C A O if if he could ask our treasurer, if twenty thirteen is the actual instead of the budgeted, and if twenty fourteen is the projected to year end.
Which uh page are you referring to, Counselor?
Page forty one. It's it's just to clarify, um the columns, is twenty thirteen where it says budget, is that the year end, is that actual?
No, budget is budget.
So it it was budgeted. And twenty fourteen, is that projected to year end, or is that year's?
Twenty fourteen annual budget.
It's just budgeted, okay.
Any further questions? Counselor.
Um, I'd like to make a request um that we receive the twenty thirteen actual, the projected twenty fourteen year end, uh so that we can compare those numbers versus what the expected twenty fifteen would be.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might add on page forty three, the actual of our stated, twenty twelve actual, twenty thirteen actual, and twenty fourteen year to date actual. You divide that by ten, multiply that by twelve, and get the annualized amounts for twenty fourteen actual, which would serve as Counselor's enter projection.
Okay, that could cross reference.
Any further questions? Counselor.
When do we have to have the interim budget done by? December?
Well, it has to be adopted by December thirty first.
Okay.
Counselor Penasek.
Just another question, I know this year we were told that we were over budget in our our council, and um it wasn't that we had, I mean, there was lots of controversy over the Niagara trip, but that was, we take that even out of the equation. Uh we were still over in our council expenses. And uh we didn't do anything out of the ordinary other than go to the meetings that we were supposed to and uh and I know that there was some counselors that didn't even claim for their their stuff, so I'm just wondering if we've got that addressed in this new budget so that we're not being viewed as over budget, but rather doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Mr. Chair, would you want me to respond to that?
Please.
Thank you. Uh, the two thousand fifteen budget is a status quo budget, um I know council has received the detail that supports the summary, and if they check that out, they'll find that the detail on is exactly the same for the meeting fees, which Counselor Penasek is referring to, is the same as in two thousand and fourteen. So they have not been increased.
And so if I can respond, then then we're looking at saying, okay, we can keep this, but then we need to go into the other one to adjust it before finalizing. Does that look unsane?
That is correct, and that's what budget deliberations are all about.
Uh first Counselor Danaka, then Counselor Carrier?
Um, go to him first.
Counselor Carrier.
I'll trade this off.
We're going to him.
Um, just really asking our treasurer, um the next time we get an interim budget, instead of a status quo budget, and we get a budget that would show I'm just grasping at straws here, a ten percent reduction in the budget. How how much would that affect the town if we reduce the budget by ten percent? Some people might be able to cut more, some people might not be able to cut at all. But instead of just a status quo budget, we've all been asking for a budget that is reduced in costs. I would really like to see administration give us s- something that would show us why it's so detrimental to cut the budget by, say, even ten percent, five percent. Show me, show us something that shows why the town would fall to pieces if we cut ten percent.
Mr. Chair.
Is is that possible?
Would you like me to respond to that?
Please.
We can do anything council asks, all you gotta do is ask, give us a resolution. You want ten percent cut, no brainer, it's easy to take ten percent off, I'm sure everyone here can take ten percent off and see what the numbers are gonna be like without me having to do it, but I'd gladly do it if you want.
Counselor Carrier.
My only response to that would be, I wanna hear from the people that are the managers, the different programs that we have, if you were to cut ten percent off, how detrimental would that be to you, everything that you're doing for the town? Can you do it? A simple, if we do this and show us how it's gonna affect the town. If we were to ask Mr. Bloom, cut your budget by ten percent, does that mean that the crime wave in town is gonna be through the roof and the cars are gonna be driving around on ball tires, I'm I'm asking for administration to give us, 'cause we can't go and talk to everybody one on one on one, we have one employee, this is our one chance to do this, I would like to see ten percent reduction. Or at least give me something that says why you can't do it. I think it's a very simple task for the different managers to be able to provide that.
Mr. Chair, uh may I respond to you?
Yes, Lieutenant Counselor.
The inquiry would be counted by the member. The order of priority in cutting the budget is contracted services are in the lowest order of priority, then materials and then labor. So we cut contracted services first, so anything that's a contracted service, that ten percent, we cut from the contracted service. And if uh there aren't enough contracted services, we go up to materials and cut ten percent there. There aren't enough materials budgets, then we go to labor and somebody loses their job or goes in the part-time, it's that simple.
Eight hundred thousand dollars. Counselor Penasek.
I I I hear what Counselor Carrier is saying, but I think it is a a point that us as counselors, we've got one that wants a ten percent reduction, maybe others want a fifteen or a twenty or or whatever amount, or maybe it's five percent that we want, but I think as a council we need to sit down and say, what do we want to achieve, what's the goal, what's the target? And I don't know if we've ever set that for for any other than just saying cut, 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 I think it's very difficult to make those cuts unless there's clear direction, and I think in this budget, we need to be very clear and say, you know, this is the the mill rig we want to achieve, or this is the, we wanna see a ten percent reduction, or we wanna see a five percent reduction, and see the scenarios come back to us, like you say, if we cut ten or fifteen or five percent, what are the implications? And recommendations from administration. We can then look at those and then say, okay, you know, the the ten percent, you know, maybe we don't want to do that, or maybe we do, what are the implications? Just like you said, but I think as a council, and not just as individuals saying, I wanna see this cut, I wanna see this cut. We need to do a unified voice, everybody agreeing that this is where we want to go and 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 ask for some options at at five, ten, fifteen, and and go from there. Or a zero, or a status quo budget, but we need to agree as a council first, that's my.
Point, and I'll go in then, Counselor enter. Again, if we're looking at a ten percent cut across the board, if just looking at then if we're going to expect people to do with less contracted services, we also have to show that we're prepared to cut as well, we are over budget on our own expenses by a mile and a half. Of. And yet, if we wanna sit on all these committees, and if we wanna go to all these meetings, and if we want all of this time to represent the town and to get in touch and understand what the people are doing, 'cause these committees are important, then some of them are gonna have to be done for free. Because we can't afford to keep overspending ourselves and then expect everybody else to suck it up. Walk and talk, gotta do both, can't do one. Uh Counselor enter, Counselor Danaka, Counselor Penasek.
Okay, I'd like to um make a request through our C A O to the treasurer, um I I know the information is provided, but for a much easier visual, I'd like to see the actual for twenty twelve, the actual for twenty thirteen, projected year end for twenty fourteen, and the request for twenty fifteen on one spreadsheet, and send me flipping back and forth and trying to figure it out. Um and and hopefully because you're already in Excel or or whatever program you're using, it's hopefully pretty straightforward and easy. Much easier than me rewriting out every line and entering every data and and doing it myself. So I think it'd be quicker and easier, unless you don't give me access to your computer.
What were they again, guys?
Actual twenty twelve, actual twenty thirteen, projected twenty fourteen, and requested twenty fifteen.
Actual twenty fourteen, you said?
No, no, projected year end. Actual twenty twelve thirteen, projected twenty fourteen, and requested twenty fifteen. It just gives us something to look at straight across.
Mr. Chair, point of order, a motion has been placed, if the honor of the members is going to propose another motion, let's first dispose of this motion first.
I'm sure.
And and at this stage of the game, we still have a motion on the floor, so we're we're discussing, if something he would like, we'll put that forward after if we can, through through our C A O.
I will.
Point of order from the gallery?
We've been asking his advice right through, but yes, thank you. Uh, yes, Counselor Kelly.
Kelly. Yeah, thank you, thank you so much. Um. While we're trying to look at this budget, not making it very complicated, as you begin to formulate what you want for the town, is stay, for example, twenty fifteen budget, and look at the revenue that you have, you have seven million dollars in revenue. Then look at the expenses that you have, you have eight point one million dollars in expenses, so already you are not breaking even. You're operating, you are suffering with the loss of one point one million. So in business, if you're in business, you'd be out of business. Because you're already having a deficit, and you want to cut more. I I'm not too sure, I I just reflect on that, that the there is already a deficit in that budget. So if you are trying to get money to reduce the mill rate, you first have to balance the budget, you you could end up just balancing the budget and not even reducing the mill rate. That's what it could be. Now, the twenty fifteen budget is a little little interesting, more interesting than twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen. 'Cause if you look at the projected deficit after you've added earned capital revenue, you're just struggling at thirty two K. Which means that if you don't bring in enough capital revenue to offset your operating deficit, you're gonna be struggling to balance the books. So what I'm trying to tell you is that you there are two two ways of looking at this. As you focus on trying to bring down the mill rate, we could be objective, also try to focus on how do we balance the books at the end of the day. And there are competing elements here, uh one to do with the operating deficit, the other to do with, do we have enough earned capital revenue coming in to offset the operating deficit to a point where you can even balance the books? So just food for thought, not, I'm not giving you any anything to do. And then you can think about the mill rate, there's there is a competing element here, just wanna write that back in. Counselor Danaka?
Counselor Penasek, men.
So in what you've just said, you have a, you have your revenue, then you have your expenses.
Yes.
Operating, yeah.
Right, which gives you your 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 debt, your of thirty two thousand, so, but if if we
It makes a bit of. Yeah.
if each department looked at some cost saving, like the other day when we were saying, well, why why, you know, in the winter, why ca- let's move snow or garbage to the front instead of the back, we save that plowing the back alley. So if you find reductions, your 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 go- your costs, your operating costs will go down because you save, you're saving money, if I'm understanding, right? And that's sort of why my question was, when did we have to have this done by December, so I'm kind of I'm kind of looking, I guess, for for the departments to come and say, really sit down and and look, or tell me similar to Counselor Carrier, saying, okay, I really looked at this, and I think we can save here, we might be able to save here, but we can't save here. I'm just asking if that's a possibility.
Mr. Walker.
As part of uh the twenty fifteen budget, if you want to look at how we've reviewed the budget, you can take into water supply distribution has been reduced, so we have looked at different scenarios uh for this interim budget. There's a couple of other things in the final budget which I would like to review again, such as electricity. Uh we're on a new contract now, but we don't have the final numbers from twenty fourteen to see how it's gonna affect us. In the final budget, we will be doing those exact same things. For instance, natural gas, i- if if we maintain the same price we're at right now, uh based upon two thousand fourteen numbers so far, we can reduce that line. So there are ways, we are looking for those cost savings. But until we get actual final numbers on things that But until we get actual final numbers on things that are unknowns to us, uh we can't reflect them in the interim budget. But we have looked at every department and detailed and based upon the services we provide, uh this is what is expected. And like I said, we did reduce water by by uh twenty twenty thousand dollar.
Counselor passing.
Um I had one comment going back to your statement earl- earlier about the uh the council being over budgeted. And uh I would argue that it was under budgeted for from the beginning. That was sort of my point, is that it was never given the money that it should have been right off the start. And so it makes it look like we are over budget, which I don't know if that's the right way to frame the the question. So that was just my comment, I I don't know if there was enough money put into that based on what was spent in other years. I mean, yes, we approved that budget, but we had nothing to base it on, no actuals to to look at when we did it. I don't think our council did anything other than what we were supposed to do when we were in our doing our job. So saying that we were over budget makes it look bad, and I don't know if that's really the right way to frame it. But I agree with you also that we have to look at ways that we can reduce our costs, so that was one. And I guess the the other question or just a comment is just making, and I know it's in here a little bit, but making sure that we have. I'd like to have those dates on when we're gonna do our budget deliberations and get down to some of the nuts and bolts. And I know we wanna take it to the public in January, get some feedback from them, which is good. Uh so that's that's where I am at, I just wanna see that schedule laid out so I'm clear in my mind when we're gonna have those nitty gritty discussions and go from there.
Counselor enter and then Mayor Cox. Go on. Mayor Cox.
So given the fact that this is questions for information only, I'm really wondering, what are we looking at this for anyways then? Because what does it tell us, really, that? What does it tell us? They haven't deliberated, they haven't brought us some numbers, it's a status quo. But I think we've been talking for the whole last year about a budget being brought in that that shows reductions. And this one is no reductions, in fact, it's increased. So I I'm not sure if the message has gone forward enough to your department managers, Mister Tomaclo, that you can't bring back a budget that is an increase. And I will say that the last uh committee that I sat on, where the manager brought back a budget that was increased. It was just turned back to him and said, no. Bring us a budget to review that is that is reasonable, this, I I don't understand why we're why we're looking at this.
We're we're looking at it because we haven't said in a formal motion that we want a budget that's gonna reflect five, ten, fifteen percent reduction. And going back to the discussions that we had with municipal affairs and the town that said to their management team, we want a ten percent cut across the board. They did, the spray part was gone, and then the people were ticked off because management cut the spray part. But town council said it wasn't us, it was them. Doesn't work that way. It was the actions of council, it was the decision of council to create that deficit or that cut. So if we want to do this, excuse me, we have to direct our administration to tell staff to bring us back a budget. Re- reflecting a five percent reduction, ten percent reduction, fifteen percent reduction. You have to be clear, you have to be concise, and that way we have the information that you need. That's how you do it. Mayor Cox.
I don't think it's up to council to sit here and say, well, this is the department that's gonna pay ten percent, or or it's gonna be ten percent across the board. We have staff that is highly paid and knows their department inside and out. If the bottom line is saying, we want a ten percent reduction, it's up to those managers working with Mister Tomaclo to bring that back and say, look. This department cannot function with a ten percent cut. But this one is going to lose to make it up, and these other ones are going to lose too. Not council doing these types of things, it's up to the administration to figure out how to do it. And if they can't do it, then they could be coming back and saying, here's the scenario, we can give you five with no problem, eight, and this is what you're gonna lose. Ten, this is gonna be a struggle.
I I agree, but we have to direct them to do that. We can't just say, I would like to have this happen, we have to make it in a formal motion. And so so if that's if that's what we want, and if that's what we truly think is the right way to go, then that's what we need to do.
Be a little motion.
I myself would like to see a huge cut in 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 some departments. I I think we s- we have a a an elephant in the room that's that's the red board. And will we s- well, how do we save money there? How do we save money? Counselor Carrier.
All the question please.
Can you read back please?
Moved by Counselor Enter that Counselor receives the proposed two thousand and fifteen interim operating budget for information.
All those in favor?
Mister Chair.
Yes, Counselor Carrier.
Um I would like to make a motion to direct administration to discuss with each department head and bring back to council. A status quo budget, a budget with five percent, ten percent cuts. And explanations as to why they can make the cuts or cannot make the cuts.
Watching Crystal type furiously.
Well, can I make a friendly amendment of the implications as opposed to why they can or can't, but the implications of where they would see it.
Through the chair, I'd be comfortable with explanations is is what I was expecting as to why they couldn't either cut.
Or just the implications of the five, the ten cuts? That's that what that's.
Yeah, so implications and explanations, put them both in.
Yeah.
Cause that's what you're.
I accept the friendly amendment from both.
And stop it just typing furiously stuff.
Moved by Counselor, or sorry Deputy Mayor Carrier, that council direct administration to bring back a status quo budget with the implications of a five percent. And a ten percent cut to the two thousand and fifteen interim budget and excl- explanations as to why they can be made. Or sorry, as to why they can make the cuts, or as to why they can't make the cuts.
All those in favor?
Mister Chair, I'd like to make a ma- motion or two. I'd like to make motion that council direct administration to provide a statement of operations showing actual twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, projected twenty fourteen. And requested twenty fifteen to the November twenty sixth council meeting.
I have that one already written.
Okay, you need to have that read back, please.
Moved by Counselor Enter that council direct administration to provide statement of of operations for the year of two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen. The projected statements of operations for the two thousand and fourteen year and the requested statement of operations for the two thousand and fifteen year to the November twenty sixth, two thousand and fourteen regular meeting of council.
Did it say actual twenty twelve, twenty thirteen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
All those in favor? Thank you.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make another motion if I may.
Vice sir, since you're on roll.
Thank you. I'd like to make motion that council direct administration to bring the bylaw stating only the C A O can request a legal opinion and have it changed to allow council to request a legal opinion. At the. When can you have a subsidy?
What's that?
When can you have a five?
That can I give you an explanation on?
No, no.
There are no there's no bylaws.
Oh.
So is my turn?
Okay.
Counselor sent down.
Good. Could we ask for the explanation? Okay?
Because council can through resolution direct either one of you to do something.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're fine.
Good.
Okay, please ignore that motion, I withdraw it.
There you go, we call it in a recess.
Oh, you're a smoker, you can control it now. This one's good here. Okay, look out, paper's looking for you.
I'll just confirm that certain information there.
Be nice.
I mean, it's a live, I mean.
Be nice.
Oh.
You have to apologize.
That was clarifying.
Yeah, there's a clarifying.
I actually warmed up nicely this afternoon. Oh. How was Chicago?
It was awesome.
But it just blocked it from further giving them.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So now that you mention that, I know who you are. Where'd you come from?
Lefrid.
Interested though.
Born and raised out there or just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is like all new to me and.
And open to the cold?
Yeah, it's definitely something, I'm probably gonna miss the schmutz.
Yes, you will. I came from Rocky and we got the odd ones there, and that was sort of a treat when you got them.
Yeah.
Just a week of warm weather in the midst of winter just sort of makes things that much easier to get through the winter, yeah. We don't often get this here. It just makes the winter seem a little bit longer. And of course, up here it is a little bit longer.
Yeah. I mean, it's not too bad, we don't have the wind up here like we do in the. So far I can't complain of it.
Excellent. Yeah, good. How do you like your work in uh for a year?
It's good, I'm still kinda getting used to my sleep schedule, cause I'm at the station at five A M and. Just getting used to going all these different means like I was at the M D meeting earlier today and the council meeting and then.
Done there and try to get something ready for tomorrow and blah blah blah.
Yeah, so it's kind of a little bit highly now, but I think I'm kinda wondering how to spread it out evenly, especially with the Christmas season coming up, it's.
It's gonna be busy.
It's gonna be busy, yeah, exactly.
What happened to the other fellow that was there before?
Um he moved back.
Eighteen months.
Took a long time job.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you just wanted out of the door.
I guess so.
Yeah, okay.
Alberto wasn't for him.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious how that was going. Good?
Yeah, so so far things have been pretty good. Yeah.
Well, welcome to high grade.
Yeah.
So anything interesting at the M D?
Uh.
The highlights there.
They kind of uh needed, I guess, official the process to change the name from M D to Big Lakes coming. So they're gonna they're gonna send a letter to the. Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand dollars.
That's uh.
Let's talk about that, I don't understand the difference between county and M D.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, but I mean, they want the name changed, they're just kinda talking like, cause they were changing all the signs and so the process of. But I mean, they had until October thirty first. Make their concerns, so. So. They're kind of going for it now. Yeah.
There's more and more these. Yeah.
On the on the library. Aren't you that many? So wouldn't that come out of of capital money?
They they had an overrun in operating is what they were asking.
Well, that's right, but it's because.
No, it's not operating, it was an operating expense, non accounts expense.
First things, because I'm. Why are why are branches upgrading parts?
How's your knee coming now that?
It's better.
It's better?
I'm working out again, so, oh, for sure.
Letting the shovel snow or just. Oh, really?
Get the other.
Get ready for the other one.
Yeah. Those are the glasses.
Pardon me?
Those are the glasses.
Couple months ago.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I wear them.
I guess, um. Well, that's I've never seen her do that, but I believe that people come in. You know what, I agree with you, I should, I should, I should, I agree with you, yes. That's all I was doing was asking, uh through him, who's I supposed to talk to him, right? And say, can I get this from you just so I can look straight. Well, it's just so I can look straight across, I just, cause I even wrote down when I was looking, I was like, is this actual, it doesn't appear actual. It's this is budget, budget, budget. I'm like, oh, I wanna go with actual, projected, and then budget so I can look across, right? I didn't think it would take long, if you didn't give me the electronic, I'd be all playing around. Okay. Yeah. That's what I. That's what I thought, I didn't think it would take long either. That's what I was doing, I thought it was just a reflex, it wasn't gonna be a motion, just, you know, just send them on a couple weeks or whatever. Just conceal, or actually, no, conceal.
Yeah.
One day closer, but I'm not near, it's one day closer. It is, it is, I'm more than halfway there, I'm old enough that it's more than halfway. But uh I didn't ask somebody to make, I gave it to him. No, 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 no. Put it in, put it in, I put it in. No, I. No, I put, I know. What do you different? Yeah, twenty five minutes, ten here and fifteen there. Two months before the tour. I just have a appointment to appoint. So I lost. No. That's my pension, so. My actual pension is a hundred percent. But that's okay, it's cheaper, remember carrying it, I'm good, I'm okay with it. I buy a lot of shares, every page. I'm not retiring yet, oh, good, I won't pay with it, I'll buy a lot of shares, I'll do pay check. Oh, no. We're down one percent this year. Okay, ten to nine.
Call this meeting back in order.